No.
The fifth thing that we were gonna bond up is the library, Expo Center, Justice Facility, the fire station.
So the Senior Center?
Senior Center. Senior Center, that was the fifth one.
What happens to your current Senior Center?
Well, it's additional. We're building some additional facility onto it.
It's like an activity?
Activity. Doug's in there taking call.
We just don't, we will not know what you're gonna ride in next year in the parade if you're the Grand Orson.
I've already had my friends and been sending that to me. Get one of them old Army Jeeps or something. That job, take your CJ first.
That jacket, Mr. Sir.
You get my message every day?
I had a meeting, so I told him that I was, I had to go. A bunch of people, my friends are asking, you gonna be at the meeting? And I was going, yeah, but I'll leave. So they came up with a job for me, which was three, big patients.
I want it from him.
Will it work?
Yeah.
Hey, Bob.
Take it out in the morning.
What are you pushing? Just hiding back. Just hiding back your town.
Rotary's not gonna announce.
I was gonna give one to you, just so you know, you want us kindness. I know y'all have. Y'all just play basketball.
We just feed thousands.
That's all. And all I was thinking about with you, just feeding you.
He should be. I'm wasting away. That's why the Santa hat fits perfectly.
Hey. I don't mind number seven, if we can get thirteen.
Thievery going on in the state.
Well, thank you and welcome. I show it's five thirty, and I know people have places to go and things to do, so we'll try and keep this as brief as possible. This is the second time we have had a joint session of the Pope County Quorum Court, the Russell City Council. For those that were in attendance last time, it was in, I think, April at the Russell Chamber of Commerce, and it was, uh, it was not near as well attended. We appreciate you coming tonight, and this is a work session where we're just gonna exchange thoughts and ideas. There'll be no votes taken tonight, there'll be no actions taken tonight, and I, for one, want to extend my gratitude to Dr. Chris Hausnick and his crew, who offered up this facility. It's a wonderful facility, and you have anything you'd like to say? Well, thanks. Absolutely thanks. This could not be facilitated without Tex's assistance and help, and we certainly appreciate our partnership with them, and we look forward to future meetings on various topics by utilizing such a great facility, so hats off to Tex. Mayor?
No, I echo your sentiments, and I do appreciate everyone being here tonight. I'm hoping that tonight, you know, the council and the Quorum Court will be able to ask questions and dialogue on the issues that we're gonna discuss tonight, so that we can come up with an amicable solution, a resolution that we can go forward. So that's my expectation tonight.
So with that being said, you know, there's a lot of things that transpired, obviously, between April and today, and we are here to talk through issues and hopefully clear up any issues that seem to be of controversy, and offer up our two cents worth, and what will hopefully be a very productive meeting and productive dialogue going forward. You know, the mayor and I have a relationship that goes on weekly. There's just too many issues in Pope County that intertwine the city of Russell and Pope County government that cannot be addressed without having continual dialogue. So outside of the big C-word, casino, there's a lot of government that takes place between Pope County and Russell. And to highlight some of those good things that go on was today. We, uh, the Chamber's annual meeting, huge attendance, marking the one hundredth anniversary of the Chamber, marking the one hundredth anniversary of Conagra Foods, marking over fifty years of Conagra being in Russell. And so we, we attend a lot more events that are cohesive than divisive, so I wanna make that very clear and apparent, that we're here tonight because we're cohesive and not divisive. On that note, you know, recently, you've seen the dialogue going on about where the casino will be located. So what I've come tonight is to avail myself to the council to answer any questions. Whether I like it or not, I inherited this entire situation, and we've tried to make, like I said, make our way through it without any direction from the state, and you have a very loosely worded amendment that placed all of this upon us, and so we're taking the opportunity to go through this in open forum and address that. At the end of all this, for anybody who wants to ask questions from the audience, after we've dismissed this meeting, I'll stay here as long as you want, answer questions as long as I can. So I just cannot avail you to speak to individual justices during this type of setting, so I would just ask that you hold all questions then, and then you can direct them to me, and if the mayor wants to entertain, that's fine too, but I'll answer everything I can up to this point. So, that being said, anything?
No, I'd say we just get to the matter at hand.
All right. So you've been hearing a lot about a bond initiative, and what a bond initiative is. In any other world, a bond initiative would involve taxpayers going to the polls and agreeing to tax themselves to pay off bonds. Act seven oh three was passed this legislative session, which takes casino revenues and applies those to bonds instead of the taxpayer having to do that. That's the simplest terms. It's applicable to only four counties in Arkansas, Jefferson, Crenden, Garland, and Pope. And there's a lot of ifs and buts to this entire situation, and those ifs and buts involve licensure of a casino in Pope County by the Arkansas Racing Commission. It involves the selected vendor to agree to a location and put down roots, and so all those come into effect. And so what I wanna emphasize from the very beginning is this bond initiative is just a proactive means of putting something in place to take advantage of Act seven oh three that only our county can do, and to put that in place, so in the eventuality that a casino comes to Pope County, we have certain steps in place. Now, some of those ideas started generating, what did Pope County need as far as infrastructure? And some of them are needs, some of them are wants, some of them are luxuries, some of them are lots. And so that list was two dozen strong, and we felt it was imperative to narrow down to a top five, to present to voters five things that we felt as a Quorum Court, and with interjection from the city, of what those core critical things should be, and let you vote on it. So that's, that's the things that were taken under Tuesday night at the Pope County Quorum Court meeting, presenting those five things in ordinance form and putting in writing, and it was passed unanimously by the Pope County Quorum Court, to present this to the voters. Now, unique to this bond initiative, you get to pick and choose for this one, against that one, and pick and choose, you can choose all, you can choose none, but the key to it is casino revenues pay off the bonds and not the voters, or not the Pope County taxpayers, to be exact. So touching on those issues, a criminal justice center. Now, a criminal justice center is gonna incorporate a lot more than just a new jail. Our current jail is under review by jail standards. It's a hundred and seventy-two bed permitted facility that usually holds about two hundred people on a daily basis, so in this proposal, it's a four hundred bed facility. We're trying to look a quarter of a century down the road, and, well, I'll be forthcoming in January, February with a new strategic initiative, but one of the things I did was look back twenty-five years. If you look back twenty-five years to nineteen ninety-five, which doesn't seem that long to me ago, but twenty-five years ago, Pope County's population was about forty-three thousand. Now we're sitting at sixty-five thousand, so we had a forty percent growth increase in a quarter of a century. If we stay on track for that, in the year twenty forty-five, we're gonna be at ninety-one thousand, just at the same growth rate. So based on that, everything I'm presenting to you is looking down the road. We're not trying to build for right now, 'cause let me give you a timeline of a bond initiative. Assuming the voters pass this initiative on March third, your March third primary ballot will contain these five initiatives. Assuming they all pass, assuming the racing commission issues a license whenever they issue it, you're looking at two to two and a half years of construction of a facility, a minimum of a six months revenue stream to see what it produces before you would even pick your first project. So realistically, from the time you vote, to the time of racing licensure, to the time of an actual digging dirt on a facility, three to four years on your first bond initiative. So this is not a overnight, by any means gonna be an overnight reality. You're looking at three to four years down the road before you dig dirt on the first project. So back to the criminal justice center. Not only is it a four hundred bed detention facility, sheriff's operations center, it would also incorporate a new nine-one-one communications facility, a new office of emergency management, EOC, emergency operations center, a coroner's facility, and two new Fifth Judicial District Circuit courtrooms. Why do we need all that? Well, right now, we have four circuit judges and only three circuit courtrooms. Right now, we have no coroner's facility for Pope County. Our coroner handles nearly seven hundred deaths a year and has no facility to operate of, and just by the sheer grace of the sheriff does he have an office. So we have a county with no coroner's facility, and that's a hazard within itself. So trying to be proactive, we're trying to think of what can we put on one slab under one roof, all disciplines that work together, and how would it be more efficiently built? And the way to do it was to come up with that facility. To do that, we ran in a team called South Build. South Build does nothing but build jail facilities, and they are, they are state of the art in the way they do it, and they actually can produce a facility that we can operate four hundred bed facility of inmates with the same amount of staffing that we're currently doing a hundred and seventy-two bed facility. It's just technology has progressed, you know, our old part of the jail's forty years old. Our emergency nine-one-one center is twenty-seven years old. It leaks, it needs to be unearthed and re-membrane, and so there's a lot of infrastructure. So, and the two courtrooms, they speak for themselves. When you can put the courtrooms adjacent to the jail facilities and you don't have to transport inmates across town, it's, uh, it's just a better. So our existing facilities will become civil proceedings, and all criminal proceedings will be at this new complex. So that kinda encompasses the criminal justice center. A new Russell Central Library. Our, uh, our library is kinda morphed into workforce development. It's no longer, it is a place you go check out books, but it's really morphed into so much more of a learning center, workforce development, and, and technology driven to the fact that a new library would contain less books, if that makes sense, because it's gonna be technology driven. So that's, again, the first one, the criminal justice center, in my book, that's a, that's a need, and we have that need today. A Russell Central Library to be located in, incorporate city limits of Russell, that's a want. That's something that we can provide our citizens, that, uh, we're not gonna lock up inmates in it, but it's, it's something that, it's a, I guess, a citizen-driven, that the citizens came and said we'd like to see this. So that got put into this equation. The price seen there, eight point four million, that was based on the library director, Ms. Sherry, Sherry's here, yeah. Ms. Sherry Simpson, she went out across the state of Arkansas and looked at all new libraries built in the last ten years, where they were built, comparable cities, what it encompassed, how much they built, how much square footage, and what it cost. So that's how that figure was derived at. Another thing in all these figures you'll have to remember is in a bond initiative, we want the casino to have to pay the cost of doing it, so, you know, her figure was about eight point one million, so three hundred thousand is built in that for the cost of getting this going. So in, there's fees obviously associated with bonding companies, and so every figure has that cost figured in, so the taxpayers are not having to accommodate that. Next thing on the list was a senior adult wellness center. All that is, is a nice way of saying a gymnasium for our senior citizens. Out in front of the senior citizen center located on Russell Road, Pope County owns that property that affronts Russell Road. Our intent would be to build a gymnasium-type complex as an adjunct facility to the senior adult center, and put it out there and expand parking, and it would involve a gymnasium-type structure with an indoor, upper-level walking track for our senior citizens. Our senior citizen center in Pope County is the most used in northwest Arkansas, even exceeding Washington and Benton Counties. So it's a highly-used facility. Again, that was a citizens-driven initiative to come to me. Next in this is the construction of a new Russell Fire Department substation to be located in the northeast quadrant of the city of Russell, and incorporated in this figure is the construction of the facility, and I would assume a bumper truck, the trucks needed in that facility. And so it's to, it's to build the facility and to outfit it, it's not personnel cost, but it's to outfit the personnel, it's to have the trucking and the brick-and-mortar structure out there, and the purchase of five Russell Police Department vehicles in this equation down the road. So that three point five seven million dollar equation is to handle all that for the northeast quadrant, i.e. potential casino location, and, and put that in effect out there for the benefit of the city of Russell, the benefit of the Russell Fire Department, the benefit of all Russell citizens, in keeping ISO ratings appropriate, and for emergency response. Now, I'll tell you, on a separate mechanism, we intend to piggyback on a location close to that with a new central EMS facility. That new central EMS facility for ambulance service would be paid for with county funds, not in the bond initiative, but just to give you an idea of locating in that northeast quadrant of Russell, we would like to locate there as well, so. Uh, one, two, three, four. So number five, multi-purpose event center. This is, for lack of a better term, Expo Center, an Expo Center to be located on the Pope County fairgrounds. It would be a facility that could incorporate year-round boat shows, RV shows, gun shows, you name it, in addition to equestrian events. Obviously, to start out, it's an equestrian event-based, but with a little bit of tweaking of the architecture and the building structure, it becomes a multi-purpose event center very easily. And to do that, again, all of these so far involve free land, and so land acquisition has actually became the cheapest part of this equation, and a multi-purpose event center would be the, like I said, an Expo Center provided to everybody in Pope County. So all of these are located within the city limits of Russell, and what I would anticipate would become the city limits of Russell. So as far as these five things on the bond initiative, let me just stop, if any of the council have any questions about these.
There's no operating costs, I haven't heard anything with operating costs involved. What's that look like?
That operating cost would be borne by increased sales revenues that will come with sales tax revenues, the taxing that will involve with annexation, and when we get into the bonding part further, I'll equate into that, but this is, this is brick-and-mortar, brick-and-mortar stuff. Any questions from the court? Yes, sir.
You were talking about the jail, building a new jail. That, that questions refer to the juvenile detention. Right now, we'd send them to?
Danville.
Danville, okay. And you're not mentioning any facility here to put them in. Right now, Danville can't take what we have.
Actually, they are. They, um...
Several times they have, so.
We have a contract with Danville. We actually have a set of beds that we contract with, and they provide us that.
These are full, we don't take them. I was just thinking, that might be something that we're looking at, so.
It, it costs three times the amount of money to hold a juvenile, and we just frankly don't wanna get in that business. It's, uh, the liability alone, it's, uh, we're far better taxpayer dollars spent ahead to contract out the facility that's already in operation.
Mr. Brown, years ago, there was a feasibility done, Pope County, about building a juvenile detention center, and throughout that process, that feasibility study came back and was not economically feasible to do that.
Okay.
Just for the sake of time, what I'd like to do, the council has had a little exposure to some of the information in the, in the inter-local agreement, and I think they've all had a copy presented to them that came in tonight, hopefully they've had a chance to look through that. I'd like to give my council members an opportunity to ask any questions they may have relating to the issues on the draft in the local agreement, and then we can give, obviously give the Quorum Court an opportunity to ask any questions or address any comments as well.
Sure. And I'll, if you want me to just cover it in layman's terms, because our lawyers wrote this, but in layman's terms, you know, the mayor and I, we meet weekly on various topics, and so we've worked through a lot of these issues, and essentially, the bond initiative, we would only bond up eighty percent of anticipated revenues, leaving twenty percent to be allocated for Amendment one hundred standards, and that would start giving direct revenue to the city, and at the tax rates that are already established by the amendment. And we will, upon a selection of a location by the selected vendor, which is Cherokee Nation Business, if they choose to locate on lands previously allocated out there that are under contract, out between eighty-three and eighty-four mile markers, then if they petition me, I will sign over voluntary annexation to the city, and that will be in a timeline following, basically, the voters vote in March. We don't know what the racing commission would do, we don't know what litigation will uphold or negate, and so a lot of ifs and buts are still in this, but if you're looking at a timeline, when we, uh, we work out the conditions of the inter-local agreement, the bond initiative, we see the results of it come March third, and the timeline progresses to where the racing commission does in fact issue a license, and that does lock in Pope County, then once C and B makes their selection of location, then as soon as they appeal to me for annexation, then I will sign over voluntary annexation to the city of Russell. And so, and I guess in exchange for that, the city has already taken the initiative to start C-five zoning, which that's new zoning that is specifically applicable to a casino resort, and that will, I guess, negate a lot of the processes as far as our, our previously issued building permit. We will rescind that, and we will allow the city of Russell to impose their building construction and permits as are applicable to all commercial construction, and so that will occur as well. And this is all outlined in the inter-local agreement drafts that we're still working on, but that's the, that's the nuts and bolts of it.
Does council have any questions?
So, still, we still good with the?
Aside of a bond initiative, because, again, voters could up one, down four, up five, you know, we don't know how it was. When C and B makes their decision of a location and they petition me, I will sign voluntary annexation.
You're saying that even if the bond issue fails?
Yes.
But if the city annexes the land through election, then the bond issue wouldn't apply at all?
The bond issue would not apply at all at that point, correct?
Yeah, and let me, let me, let me make, clarify that, you know, we discussed annexation at one time, but given the requirements for free readings, for a reading and ordinance, and then the hundred and twenty-day period, there was no way that we could get the annexation question to the voters before the March third primary, and then March third primary is when the bond issue will be decided by the voter. So, so any way we go, whether we tend, whether the city annexes it via vote to the citizens or not, the, the bonding question will be answered first. Does that make sense?
Mayor, for clarification on that, if the bond, bonding initiative passes in March, it still supersedes an annexation vote at a later date, correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, that's correct. The bonding would tie up that percentage of proceeds for the life of the bond. Yes.
What is the life of the bond, Judge?
We don't know, that's the sixty-four thousand or sixty-four million dollar question probably is, until the doors open and revenues are seen, we have no projection. If it's based on the, the five vendors who submitted proposals, if it's based on their projections, you're looking at about a twenty-five-year payout.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, they, we had a study done, and it calls for the fire station also, and then it had one point two million a year in, I guess, overhead, I don't know what other word to use, annually, that we'll have to have.
I don't know what other word to use, uh, annually that we'll have to have. If this goes into play, we will, after the numbers, uh, it's about five hundred thousand in gaming revenue and then about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand in sales tax revenue. So six, seven hundred thousand. So we're still five hundred thousand short on our expenses. Um, so I don't really see that it's prudent that we hit a want scale of, uh, multi-purpose facilities and all this other stuff whenever we have a five hundred thousand dollar detriment, uh, to the city of Russellville. I mean, it's, that's my opinion. I don't know how anybody else feels. But, uh, I feel like, uh, as a business, you always want to cover your expenses first. And then at that point, you, you go and do other stuff.
And I might be able to answer that with the way bonding occurs.
Sure.
So assuming the voters of Pope County vote all five of these into effect, it is then incumbent upon the court and court to prioritize which comes first. So obviously, a fire department and a jail are going to come first. And so then those bonds have to be retired to a certain percentage of debt ratio before the next project can come into play. So realistically, the multi-purpose event center is probably last in the pecking order. The first two things would be the justice complex and the fire department attempting to do those simultaneously.
So just to clarify, Mr. Olson's questions to the audience a little bit. Um, so when we looked at, when the city looked at the expenses to be incurred on an annual basis for a casino in the community, when you look at the new fire, fire station, we'll be required to maintain our ISO ra- uh, rating. We looked, it's going to take about thirteen new firefighters. We estimate five new police officers, a couple of community development, uh, personnel. For salary, annual salary benefits of about one point two million dollars to the city per year. That doesn't include any infrastructure issues. That's just salary to accommodate the issue. So given the eighty-twenty, Mr. Olson referred to, uh, eighty percent bonding, twenty percent revenue, uh, at, with an estimated hundred million dollar, uh, gaming revenue per year, that would equate to about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, in tax revenue that wouldn't be tied up in the bond. And of that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year that wouldn't be tied up in the bond, this county, per Amendment one hundred, would get about two hundred and fifty thousand of that and the city would get five hundred thousand of that. So with city five hundred thousand and then assuming sales tax and, uh, permitting fees and, uh, what am I forgetting here? There's, um, franchise fees. The city would get another two hundred thousand dollars for about seven hundred thousand dollars, which would be short of covering the cost would be incurred by casino in the area. And that, that's, just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Mayor, if I may ask the judge, judge, so do, does anybody have a firm estimate or projection of what we feel like, whether it's C and B, you, someone else, of what we really think the gaming tax revenue will be?
Four point two million.
Four point two million, okay.
That's an average, if you, if you take all five vendors and you put their projections on paper and you get an average, the average is four point two million. Now, some of them came in, uh, C and Bs came in at four point nine million. And so they have, uh, matter of fact, I've got it somewhere to the... Hard Rock projected four point six million, River Rids projected three point nine million, uh, Legend C and B projected four point nine million and Gulfside projected four point one million. And if you average it out, my bad, four point three seven five million is the average. And Chalk Todd didn't provide us nothing.
Four point three seven five?
Four point three seven five million is the average, based on all four proposals. And that's based on a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty million dollar net gaming receipt revenue range.
So, and then the, the eighty percent that you're going to bond, project a bond on that, the twenty percent would leave, um, you ever take a million dollars, pretty close to it or well under a million dollars? So we would be looking at about seven hundred thousand off of that seventy thirty?
Yes.
Six fifty, somewhere in there. And then I think the city finance director has projected some sales tax figures of around a hundred and eighty-eight thousand or something there. I, um, I believe that, um, Mr. Garrett had, had run some different other numbers and the numbers a little bit higher. So let's, let's be hopeful in his numbers or just hope that his numbers are correct. So if we take that average of about two hundred and ten thousand dollars, we're still, uh, in the ballpark of about nine hundred thousand. And so the, I, I think we're probably more like about two or three hundred thousand deficit than the five hundred thousand, I mean.
So you're saying less of an impact than...
But less of an impact, but still an issue to overcome. Um, and I'm taking that as of information from city finance director and averaging that with what Mr. Garrett had provided me previously, you know, about a two hundred and ten thousand dollar average sales tax, um, plus this. Uh, the fire and police total, one point one million dollars. The two hundred and eighty thousand, eight thirty-four and eight hundred and ten comes out to right about a hu- one point one million. So we're two to three hundred thousand dollars short. I think that's what Mr. Olson was getting to is, in our budget, how, how, we've got to figure out how to make that, is that a fair assumption, Mayor?
Sure is.
Um, that's going to be an expense of, that's, that is just the required services of police and fire to Russellville, uh, that's going to be projected from the fire chief, police chief, et cetera. And so that's where kind of my question for the numbers.
And again, keep your timeline in mind, this is three to four years out. So we've got three to four years to work towards this.
Any questions over here?
Uh, Judge, uh, obviously, there, there's a broad range of, of, uh, services and different things in this. Um, should the shortfall occur that, uh, a lot of people believe that will, uh, my phone calls today are centered on, will we raise taxes? Is that in the plan? How, how we're going to, you know, make up for any, uh, shortfall that it may take in operating costs and, or operating costs over there a while ago. Um, is, what, what is your thinking on, on how to make sure that, that we don't have to, uh, ask the voters to, to raise millage or anything like that or an additional sales tax? Because that, that's a question that's coming in.
I think it jones back to what I started with. I looked twenty-five years back to see what we were doing in nineteen ninety-five. And it, it's growth, economic growth, human growth and where we are twenty-five years later. Uh, we, we passed a budget Tuesday night in excess of twenty-seven million dollars, annual operating budget. Our budget in nineteen ninety-five was seven point seven. And our population has grown forty percent. So I think as population grows, the economy grows. And if you want me to, if you want me to get into the selection of C and B, I can give you a, a good overview of their business model as to why they were selected. And I, I think that will almost give you the basis for the answer is the projected economic growth for this area, if this occurs and if this is created, is projected at ten billion dollars over the next twenty years. And so with that economic growth, with that economic growth becomes your tax base. So to answer your question, I, I don't see a need for a tax increase.
That's what I was hoping here.
Yeah. But, you know, amazingly enough, we're operating on one mill while every county that borders operates all five mills. And so we've, uh, we've still been very prudent and conscientious about expenditures. And so I, I, I don't think there'll be a need for it.
Let me address it from the city's perspective, because I, I tend to look at it more in what, what I know rather than what I hope to happen. And what I know is that the current city budget is, is tight. We proj- we kept a flat budget this year, pretty flat budget, uh, from expenditures. Our revenues, uh, didn't increase significantly. It did increase somewhat, but we're operating at about ninety-seven percent of revenue right now in the city. Um, so there may be economic growth and there may be population growth that offsets the expected deficiencies that we're, we've been talking about. But I have a hard time planning on what I hope to happen. I need to plan on what I know will happen. And from that perspective, I have some concerns. Uh, will I raise taxes? Well, I could just imagine how that would go over, that we get a brand new casino in town and I go ask the citizens of Russellville to raise their taxes to help pay for it. Uh, so that answer, answer that's no. But I can tell you based on my projections that there will be some economic difficulty in the city of Russellville, based upon the projections that I see of right now.
Well, let me just say that, uh, as far as the casino is concerned, I'm still against the casino. Uh, I can't see the economic benefit to the county or the city except for the revenue that y'all are going to generate on this eighty-twenty split. But when you said there's a hundred and twenty-five million dollars expected revenue from the casino each year, is that about right what you said? A hundred, no, the judge, a hundred and twenty-five million to...
A hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty million was in those proposals.
All right. And so I, I was looking at one twenty-five. So I looked at if the River Valley area contributed forty million of that and that money is what people gamble at the casino. Then where's the money, for economic money for Brangus or Pennies or Stobies going to come from? And then when those local businesses suffer, who's going to sponsor the baseball teams and the softball teams? Because their business is less than what it was. Now, the casino stands to make money, I get that. Uh, and I, I'm assuming that no one is personally making money. But when we put the city and the county in that situation and the city already can tell you, they don't have the money for the infrastructure. And, uh, we can't afford the increase in fire, police and, and, uh, emergency care that's projected. And so now then you're asking us to support, uh, eighty-twenty split and whereas you said before, you didn't want to give the city any money. So what, why are we, why are we even trying to deal with something here when we still haven't gone and asked the people, do they want a casino now? I, I think this is just trying to water down the whole effort of having a casino when there's a, a big, uh, part of our county and city that does not want a casino at all. And so it is my intention to continue on the annex, uh, venture, get that on the ballot, pass the annex and then say, no, the casino. If they want to go to Dover, they can go to Dover. But I think that, uh, you've sold the county out by what you said earlier to what you're saying now. And I think it's wrong for us to pursue a casino. And this is just kind of a, a game we're playing to try to be nice about it. But I'm against it, I stand against it. I think it's wrong for the county and the city. And I think that we are just playing with numbers that, uh, aren't realistic.
Man, I got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Was there a sixty-forty split ever offered between the city and the county or mentioned?
Mentioned, yes. But there's no legal way to...
And then it was turned down?
Well, there's just no legal way to go around Amendment one hundred. And so we, that's what we found is there's no legal, no, no legal mechanism to go around the parameters of Amendment one hundred.
Agreed. Agreed. I don't run a big business, I don't do any of that, but I, I do run a household. And, uh, I don't, I don't think it's prudent to run our household going into something with a negative three hundred thousand dollar expense when we're operating thin already. Uh, so, uh, it's, it's really tough to get on board with it when we just want to cover our expenses. We're not, we're not asking for a multi-purpose building. We're not asking literally just to cover expenses. We don't want anything extra out of it. Um, so that's, that's just where I'm at. I, I'm, I'm, yep. I, I don't know. Other than that, it is what it is. Judge, if you don't care, let me go back to your list of bonding items. You said a Russell Central Library. Is that going to remain a county-operated facility? You just named it Russell Central Library. Is it going to have an operational expense from the city of Russellville?
No, it's, it's the county's library system, just like the Russellville library.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no, it's no city expense. Actually, they have the same millage rate as the county general fund. So they're, they're self-funded by the voters who voted in that millage, I think in the late nineteen fifties. So they're, uh, they are self-funded by the taxpayers at the taxpayers' request.
I'm assuming that a lot of this stuff, uh, bigger building, newer technology, all that stuff just has an increased operating expense. Uh, again, I just, I haven't seen that in any, in anything. Uh, just for instance, the new fire station that we built, yeah, it's, it's new technology and the, all the new stuff. But, you know, along with that comes the, the regular expenses of keeping that stuff up to date, the fire sprinklers, the, you know, fire extinguishers on the wall. All that stuff comes with an added expense. So they, uh, projected out their increased expense when they built that building to take into consideration when they did the budget. And, uh, when you bond up all of the money and, and max out your credit card, for lack of better words, uh, for the next thirty years and don't take that into consideration, it just seems very fiscally irresponsible. Um, I, I, I mean, if, if you're going to do it, get the operating costs involved with it because you're going to have it. I don't know, I just don't see it anywhere.
I appreciate what Mr. Hurrell said, he's, 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 he's got an opinion and, uh, he's entitled to that. I'd say this, if we all don't agree with that opinion on this council, I'm sure the court and court has their opinion too. But, uh, me, myself, uh, I'm not anti-casino. I'm, I'm in favor of it coming and it's not going to be able to stop it. So let's get the best deal we can get and do the best thing we can with it. And, uh, do the best thing for the city and the county. And tonight was a, a good thing and I, I appreciate you putting this together. Okay, a lot of information, uh, in there and a little more I can read later. But, uh, I think henceforward that we need to probably have some more of these, enter agency meetings, okay? So we can be more on topic and we get more comfortable about the positions and what all we're, uh, facing at that time. Those are coming up and just thought, and I'd let you know that.
So where are we? Are we, are we five hundred thousand dollar off of the projection that we're given on the hundred and twenty-five million revenue from the casino? As far as the city's expense, what you had projected, Mayor, where are we at as far as...
The city's expense are pretty much fixed. I mean, we pretty much know what that's going to be. What we don't know is what the revenue stream will be for the casino. You know, uh, the judge mentioned a hundred and thirty million dollar a year, uh, gaming revenue. Uh, I used a hundred million because that's the number that was thrown around at, at one point in time. I, I don't know what the real number will be. And obviously, that real number will dictate how much is available for both the bond and for operating expenses.
Those real figures, can I tell the casinos here?
Mr. Mayor, is the, uh, Gulfside's case settled yet? Is that still in litigation? As I understand it, chance are nothing will be done until that's resolved. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I haven't been interfaced, I haven't interfaced at all with the racing commission. I'm not sure exactly what their position is on, uh, the Gulfside case. It is, uh, obviously at the circuit court, court level in, uh, Pulaski County. Uh, the judge in Pulaski County appears to want to slow roll that issue, uh, and not hear that case. So, uh, my understanding is unless, uh, someone intervenes and forces it to the front of his list or takes it out of his docket and puts it into another one, uh, it's going to be a while on that decision. But, but I, that's all I know of that case.
Thank you. Judge, I'm just going to ask this, um, is the eighty-twenty set or is there any margin there?
With the bonding that's already, the ordinance was already passed. And so we, we put the fire station, the police cars, all in the bonding ordinance and passed that into law Tuesday night. And so that part is set. I- is the eighty-twenty negotiable? It, it can be, but it, it's only going to be that way when we find out what the money is. And so it's hard to say eighty-twenty tonight because we're not going to know eighty-twenty for four years, realistically. Three to four years before we ever know truly what such split would encompass.
Because that, like I said, well, I think that's our concern, at least mine is. Have, have you had a chance to look over?
Have, have you had a chance to look over what the mayor had sent you with the fire and police?
Oh, yeah, I've got it right here.
So do you kinda, you have any issues or concerns or questions on those numbers?
Not at all, that's the cost of doing business.
You think they're fairly accurate at least?
Absolutely.
And how, how we, that's, you know, that's just to maintain our current service. And we've gotta figure out how to be able to afford that, basically.
And, and one thing about bonding is you bond at a hundred and twenty-five percent. And so the bonding company is always keeping you in reserve, so to speak. And so they are, they are overcompensating to make sure that funds are available. So even within the eighty twenty split, there is still room to negotiate, because you're gonna have twenty-five percent more, basically twenty-five percent more coverage of that bonding issue. So yes, at, at the time when monies are flowing, that's a good discussion to have. And, but I, I would hate to just anticipate and speculate tonight what it could be, because we'll never know.
Well, my question is, are, are you potentially open to, to that discussion if it needs to be adjusted from eighty twenty, from the talking point of eighty twenty?
For the inter-local agreement, no, I think it needs to stay as written. And then when, when the money becomes relevant, it becomes real, and then we can, we can re-address that issue. But you know, it's, it's hard to speculate something three years out.
What happens to the twenty-seven million EDA that y'all got? Is that, does that, was that used to satisfy the bond at the end, or is that after the bond's paid, you get that twenty-seven back?
No, that's gonna be used to jumpstart a lot of, again, we had more than a dozen different topics. And so we have to build a new ambulance service. Our ambulance service is over forty years old, and so part of that's gonna build a new ambulance service. And so we'll have, probably come January or February, a list of capital improvement projects that will be funded to jumpstart ahead of projects that were not included in a bond initiative. And so we'll have, we'll have that money to go to those as startup projects to get something, because the ambulance service is, is a need today. Irregardless of this whole casino issue, if, if they never came, we still gotta have a new jail, we still gotta have a new ambulance service. If, if none of this ever came to fruition, we still have to have those two critical infrastructures. This is just a mechanism by one pays for it upfront and one pays for it with casino proceeds and through a bond initiative. So tho- those two are really non-negotiable items, because they're, you know, they're required whether this whole issue comes to reality or not.
So wouldn't it be prudent to just bond those two things since they're immediate needs? I mean, why do we have to go and do all this other stuff? Seems like this, the, the jail that's needed is now turned into, morphed into this big old conglomerate, just like all this other stuff. So why, I mean, if we did that, then you're only bonding up, I don't know, community numbers or whatever it is.
I, I think you have to look at the fact that the citizens drove a lot of this to me. And so things like a new library, an expo center, those were citizens, I was listening to the citizens of Pope County. And they're all things to be located in Russellville that will generate Russellville tax revenue. So I think you have to look at the economy of scale there to know, you know, if your citizens are telling me you want one thing, well, we know we gotta have a jail. We know we have to have new courts, we know we have to have an ambulance service, those are, we know we have to have a fire station to cover that quadrant of the city. Those are known realities. But at some point, you gotta listen to your citizens who say, we'd like to also see this. And it goes back to what I said about the peccan order. The first two things are, that are gonna tie up revenues are, are the jail and the fire department. So as far as, that's only two things that are gonna be bonded up. Everything else will be down the road. So does that make sense? We're, we're not bonding up the whole amount right off the bat, we're bonding up on two critical infrastructures.
You know, and then you're saying that that's gonna take twenty year, twenty-five years, however long?
Twenty to twenty-five years on their current estimates, yes.
So we've gotta figure out a way to come up with, you know, three to five hundred thousand a year for twenty-five years to cover the expenses of it. So that's just, that's my only, I got an issue with going into something in the red and then, and something goes off in my head and says, that ain't right. With Russellville being the biggest part of the county, I think that should be taken into consideration as well, so.
Well, I think it goes back to our April meeting that Russellville is the single biggest consumer of Pope County goods and services. And so that's why we're here tonight, is we're all in this together. And so since the city of Russellville uses sixty percent of what, what we provide, then that's why we're all here. So I think that's the, the cohesion needs to come, that, that we're providing services that two-thirds of Pope County uses are, are right here in these single limits. So, and I'm, I'm more than willing to sign the annexation over to the city after these, you know, this timeline occurs, so.
So the court and court has been pretty quiet on this side of the room, do you guys have any thoughts or questions?
Kinda like everybody else, it's all anticipated, I mean, it's the same way we run our budgets, we don't know what we're gonna have next year. So like you said, to put a dollar of value, it's hard. You know, we're, we're talking percentages, and it's a true dollar amount, we don't know, it's all anticipated, we don't know. And I, like you said, tonight, we're not here to sign anything or finalize anything, this is just what we've got, I guess, put together to look at for everybody.
I wanna address Chris's, Chris, your concern about operating costs. The bond money will be used to build the facility, and we'll just shift our existing cost into the new facilities. So we really don't expect any increase in operating cost.
But that's what I don't understand, is 'cause you've got, yeah, you've got older buildings and you're saying new technology limits manpower essentially. But along with that, that technology and new things, they still need to be serviced regularly, you still got testing that has to be done. All that stuff goes as an overage and I, I think the fire department guys are here, they'll, they'll tell you how much their cost went up. Going from the central fire station of old to the central fire station of new, I mean, it was drastic. I'm just saying, put, put some thought into that, there's, there's more there than just saying, oh, it's gonna be the same, because it's not gonna be the same. Including the, the build cost, I mean, just the construction cost over the next four years before shoveling the ground is gonna go up drastically. There's a lot of that, and, and to, to take and, and, and bond, you're, you're bonding eighty percent for you and twenty percent for us, whatever, however you wanna look at it, it's a hundred percent. And you're taking all that now for the next twenty-five, thirty years, twenty, twenty-five years, it just, well, I, I can understand that you have a need now. Do that stuff that you need now, but the taxes are paid to pay for that other stuff. We don't need some of that stuff now, let's be fiscally smart about it. That's, that's all I'm asking of them. Not asking for a shiny new nickel out here, you know, just pay expenses, pay what you need, and let the taxes pay for the extra stuff, just like we pay for everything else. That's just my two cents.
Alright, for, for anybody that wanted to, I was gonna go through the timeline of this summer, if you wanted to hear the story. And that's completely up to you, I'm not gonna, these guys lived it, I lived it. And so if you want a timeline of what happened and why, if you don't, I will not go into it. But if it, if it is to the, I guess, interest of any of the council. Okay?
Let's hear it.
I do wanna say I wanna do more of this, though.
Is that?
This can, I'm just gonna take a few quicks.
We don't wanna relive it. Yeah, no kidding.
Alright, so I'll just touch on a few things. You know, on June eleventh, we had a special call, court and court meeting to discuss ordinance twenty eighteen oh forty-two, known as the local control ordinance. And five thousand seven hundred and eight people signed a petition to put that on the local ballot. My wife and I were two of them. Matter of fact, I can tell you that Dr. Cloud's wife, Cherry, I signed her petition, because I believed in the local right for people to decide. Even though government civics-minded knew that constitutions and local ordinances don't jive. And that's will still be played out in the courts in days to come. But I signed that petition because I believed in the local right of Pope County to decide. So if you go down there and look, my signature and my wife's signature are gonna be sitting on that same petition. Because I believed in the premise of what it stood for. So I'm also a realist, I also accept the reality that a constitutional amendment passed. And just as the council dealt with the constitutional amendment for medical marijuana and got sued over, we dealt with the constitutional amendment for a casino, and we've gotten sued over it. So, you know, we feel your pain, I hope you feel ours, we both dealt with a constitutional amendment, two of them, that overwhelmingly failed in Pope County. We both tried to uphold the will of our voters by not doing what Pope County voters said they didn't want. They said they didn't want a marijuana dispensary, they said they didn't want a casino. And I guess they're fixing to open up in about a week or so. So, you know, the city incurred a lawsuit, and the city took actions to get the county, the city out of the lawsuit. The county has incurred a lawsuit, we took actions to get the county out of the lawsuit. Now, you may say our, our failures of lawsuits are different. Well, what you may or may not know is between June eleventh, when that meeting happened, and Travis Story, Citizens for Better Pope County Attorney, stood up at our meeting and gave us his interpretation of what he had written, his exact words were, no, no, our intention was for you, and he pointed to the members of the court, to pick a vendor and let's vote on it. And so that gave us news, I guess, new introspect into what was going on and as what was the intent of twenty eighteen oh forty-two, which was to have an election and vote on it. And his exact words were, pick a vendor and let's vote on it. And so up to that point, we had looked at every mechanism possible to do that. And so between June eleventh and our August meeting, when a resolution was passed, the following things occurred. I knew that the pro-casino lobby was gonna file a suit among members of the court, upon myself, for non-feasance of office. So you have malfeasance, misfeasance, and non-feasance. And non-feasance, just so you have a legal definition, is the failure or omission to do something that should be done, especially something that is one, is under a duty or obligation to do. Now, you can argue back and forth of whether that lawsuit would have ever went anywhere, may or may not, who knows? But that was one lawsuit. Then you had the fact that we were just gonna say, we're gonna have the election, whether you like it or not. And that would involve calling for a resolution to the court and setting an election, and we're gonna have an election as dictated by twenty eighteen oh forty-two. So with that in mind, we got notice we were gonna be served with an illegal exaction suit. It would be an illegal exaction of taxation to use taxpayer funds to call for an election of which contradicts the constitution of the state of Arkansas. So the election would have never occurred, that would have been a lawsuit, lawsuit, lawsuit number two. Then you had Gulfside, who came in, in the end of July, first of August, end of July probably, and basically came in and said, give me a letter, or I'm gonna sue you. And so I didn't do it, and so he did file suit. And so lawsuit number three. Then we have the lawsuit we're currently in, which was for doing something. And so we were gonna get sued for doing nothing, or doing something, or doing anything at this point. There were four, four ways to get to a lawsuit. Now, all four of those would have bring the constitutionality of twenty eighteen oh forty-two into effect. All four of those would have brought that somewhere in the case for a judge in a judicial court of law to decide that case. Whether it been from the anti-casino side, the pro-lobby side, the Gulfside, any side you look at of those four equations, even the illegal exaction side would have brought that constitutionality into effect and had a, had a ruling. So since that time, obviously, we've had a ruling, and that is currently in the appeal processes, and, you know, however it goes, we'll see. But all four mechanisms would have led to a lawsuit between June eleventh and August thirteenth. So faced with that timeline, the court had to decide, what are we gonna do? All four of these are gonna involve a lawsuit, we, we had to accept that fact. And the, if we'd have called for the election as dictated by twenty eighteen oh forty-two, we would've got sued and that election would have never occurred, so we never got the results of it. So with that in mind, you had to take into effect, you had five vendors who had all submitted their packets in May, all five had been rejected. And then you have to start looking at the merits of it, of who had what case. Now, as the single person that was really handed all this by Amendment one hundred, you know, I felt it, my fiduciary duty as the county CEO to maintain the finances, to look at this from a business perspective, and to pick a vendor and go forward with the best case of a situation that was handed to us. So you had five vendors that came to the table, the Keel Group were the very last ones that came in virtually at the time of the application process in May. And then you had the other four that all came into proceeding. But the first one that came to me was Cherokee Nation Business, and they came to me in April of twenty eighteen. So long before anybody else came to town, they had a presence here, they, they established themselves as reputable and business-minded. And I'm not gonna be here to cheerlead them, but I'm gonna have to tell you what I know about them, to let you know why they were selected. So what you have is June eleventh to August thirteenth, you got a timeline there of a decision has to be made. Terry Green's already walked into my face and told me, I'm gonna sue if I don't get my letter, if I don't, if you don't basically tell me, you know, what you're gonna support. And I'd already entertained economic development agreement ideas that started with Cherokee Nation Business. And when the other vendors started learning about EDAs, they kinda started getting on board and offering different things. And this thing grew, and it grew from a perspective of who could outdo the other. And are there ones in this group that are capable of writing bigger checks? Absolutely, absolutely. But you also have to take into effect, who do you want to be your neighbor for the, the duration? Twenty years, thirty years, forty years, who do you want to be your neighbor? And so out of the five, I had to pick who I wanted to be my neighbor, and that's what it was based on. And so from that perspective, I started negotiating for the economic development agreement. And I can tell you that certain vendors came to town with a scorched earth mentality and attempted to turn the public against their elected officials. And that did not win favor in my book. And so I, you know, the, the list was easy to get down to Cherokee Nation Business very quickly. And here's the overall reason why. Of the five vendors, twenty years from now, four of them would have still been a casino. A Hard Rock would have still been a Hard Rock, a Elite would have still been an Elite, a River Ridge was with the Elite Bunch. All of those would have still been what they are from the time they broke ground and what they are. Cherokee Nation Business is the only one that came in with a business model that is not solely directed at casinos. Matter of fact, over half of Cherokee Nation Business is in other things than casinos. It's in NASA, aerospace defense, Lockheed Martin, they're in multiple countries around the world. And the model that they bring to town that nobody else brought to the table was the fact that a decade down the road from now, if the economy starts to fluctuate or flatten out, they are the only one of the five that could bring to the table, not only the, the money to install new business, but also the fact that fifty percent of their business is in other things. They're the only ones that could hypothetically come in a decade from now and put in an aerospace defense company and hire five hundred people in Russellville. And not only have the funding and backing to do it, but have proven that they have done it. And so I would encourage, for those that hadn't, go to CherokeeNationImpact.com. And that's a, it's an annual report they did, they filed it with, I think, the Secretary of State's office in Oklahoma. And look at things other than casinos. And go to their business model, go to Cherokee Nation Business, look at what all they're in besides casinos. So of the five vendors, there is only one that a decade down the road, twenty years down the road, could provide more infrastructure than just a casino. And so that's, that's why they were selected. They, they came forward with the best business model of the five, they established the best relationship as a, as a partner going forward. And so we had a timeframe, we had from June eleventh to August thirteenth to make that decision. So when the economic development agreement started materializing, I reached out to every mayor in Pope County, every school superintendent, heads of chambers of commerce, I reached out to the heads of nonprofits, and, and took inputs and ideas of what you want, reached out to citizen groups and, and asked for that input. out to citizen groups, and asked for that input. And that was throughout the month of July, essentially. The whole month of July simulated all those people. Nobody was under a nondisclosure agreement, I didn't put anybody under the cone of silence when they came to my office to discuss things, they were free to go talk about anything they wanted as far as that economic development agreement. So, it was a, it was a very open process, I engaged many members across Pope County. So, that's kind of a timeline of why this thing moved, the pace at which it moved, the fact that we were gonna get sued by one of four mechanisms irregardless, and the current state of affairs that we're in today. And so, again, I'm a realist, I've got the constitution right here, and I can see that in the end, I think the constitution will prevail. I may not, but I'm trying to be proactive and trying to look ahead, and that's why I think this interlocal agreement, there's no doubt to me that the city of Russellville is the economic base of this county. There's no doubt that the economic growth based around this facility and future growth down the road, because I've seen their model. This is more than a casino resort, RV park, convention center, it's more than that, you're talking about something along the line that if you can envision Branson Landing, you're looking at retail, high-end retail, good restaurants, and so, it's a building block. So, the economic growth centered around Hobnaw is there. And you may or may not know, the location at Dover is actually a portion of unincorporated property surrounded by Dover city limits. So, as we sit here tonight, whether it's out here or up there, it's unincorporated starting now. I think that's key to know. So, you know, Dover reached out, they asked for my support, I gave it, but you should know that the actual physical property of both locations, Russellville or Dover, starts out as unincorporated Pope County lands. And as being such, it falls upon us, it's our problem, it's not, I only call it our issue. And so, it's our issue to work through, and that's what's led us all the way up to this point. And I, I think the mayor and I have great discussions about this and every other thing that comes along that involves both of our agencies, but there's no doubt the economic growth spectrum is off Hobnaw Road. I recognize that, economic development recognizes that, I think you all recognize that. So, I'm just trying to extend an olive branch and say, "What can we agree to?" And a lot of ifs and buts are still out there, the ifs and buts will continue until all the litigation probably is decided. And again, it's not my decision, it's C and B's decision on where to locate. It's a business decision to them, obviously, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna speak for them, I'm just gonna speak to the fact of, that's why they were chosen, they provided something the other four couldn't, they put their stuff in writing, and they have a proven performance that you can go out and look at. So, that's, that's what happened in that short three-month period. Any questions about that?
And let me, let me just say this for the city of Russellville, and I think I speak for the council. You know, the council and the mayor have really no say in whether a casino comes into Pope County or not. The concern of the council and the mayor at this time is making sure that we have a revenue stream that will support the infrastructure and needs of our community if a casino comes into town. I've said that from day one, and I'll continue to say that. There are some concerns, I think, expressed tonight about the way the bonding is set up, that it may impact the funding sufficiently enough that the citizens of Russellville will be impacted in a negative way from a tax perspective, the way the bonding is currently set up. So, I'd like to revisit that some more and see if we can come up with something that's a little more amicable, but that's our concern. And council, you may openly oppose me or discredit me in this meeting, but we are just concerned about the citizens of Russellville and the impact on the city of Russellville when the casino comes in. That's it.
And back to Mr. Olson's point, you gotta realize, the front two, the Russell Fire Department and the jail thing, those are the first two bonding things that would be taken up. And if that takes up the majority of the years and time, maybe the other never happens. So, it's a, so, we're not bonding up all the money at the beginning. So, I'll make that clear.
But it gets extended, though, is what you're saying, is at the end, you just extend it and do the next project, extend it to the next one. Does it go to a vote at that time?
No, the vote, the vote the voters take March third put this in stone for future. Then it becomes incumbent upon the Court of Court to put those projects into play. And again, the first two projects, jail and fire department. And so, quite frankly, none of y'all, none of us will be there in that equation when it comes time for the next bonding project.
I'm pretty young.
Well, maybe Sean. Yeah.
Any other topics?
Play a trade.
I'm good.
Well, from my standpoint, again, I appreciate everybody's attendance, and I, like I said, we did this in April, and there may have been six people attended, but we all sat around and had this same conversation, something the mayor and I committed to. Before casinos were even in the equation, we said, "Hey, the two biggest governing bodies of Pope County ought to get together and sit down from time to time and just strategize about what's going on." Everything that impacts Russellville impacts us, everything that impacts the county impacts Russellville. So, this is the second of such meetings, and I look forward to the next one.
And Judge, one thing I'd like to add is that at that April meeting, the six people that were in the audience, two of those people were Chuck Garrett and Sean Slaton. So, that should tell us a little bit about the people that we were dealing with. They showed up at every meeting, and even when they weren't involved in any of that discussion, they showed up and just to see and check in.
Thank you for your attendance tonight, and I appreciate the Court of Court members being here tonight, and I think it was good, it's better than me, thank you.
All right, so once we close the meeting, the Court of Court is free to go if they want, I'll stay here and entertain questions if you have.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting's adjourned.